Welcome everyone to this Zoom event for Chris Cole for School Board. As I'm hoping most of you know, we are going to reelect Chris Cole to JCPS District Two. He's also the Vice Chair of the Board of Education. I'm Michael Gray, I'm his campaign manager. And I want to thank Chris for being here with us, want to thank Adam Edlin and the other hosts of this event. I mentioned Adam Edlin, also Gil Holland, their co-host, Neville Blakemore, Craig Greenberg, Louisville Metro Council President David James, Elizabeth and Mike Mays, Senator Morgan McGarvey and Jasper Ward. With that, I'll turn it over to you all, Mr. Edlin, please take it away.
Well, listen, it's great to be with you. Obviously, Chris has been a good friend of mine for a long time and we're looking forward to facilitating some good conversation, not just about what's happening in the crazy world events that are going on around us, but through his outstanding leadership there at the Jefferson County Public Schools. So Doc, I'm glad to be with you, my friend, how are you?
I'm doing well, really appreciate you agreeing to lead this. I couldn't think of a better person to host an event like this. I'm really grateful for your support. Thanks also to Gil Holland for his really strong support. And thanks to all the co-hosts that Michael just mentioned and everybody else who's receiving this and considering donating and supporting the campaign, really, really appreciate it.
And let me say that out from the outset, it is important for good candidates to be well financed. I have done part of what I'm gonna do, folks, I'm getting ready to do more. And we certainly encouraged a number of people to give. You know, I think a lot of people forget that the Jefferson County Public Schools represents the second largest government in Kentucky. Not a lot of people know that its budget is about twice of that of Metro Louisville. And I would say, given the mission of educating more than 100,000 kids from every walk of life, from every level of ability, you know, from every socioeconomic background, this really is one of the key areas of our community that really is going to drive our future. And it's, and it's not just the size and scope of this opportunity and challenge. It's, I really think, the size and proportion of great young leaders like Chris. So Chris, shall we get to it? And you and I have never had a problem in conversation and, but there are a lot of important things to be talked about tonight. And I'd love to get in and discuss a few of them. You know, the obvious 900-pound elephant or gorilla, whatever the metaphor is, is the COVID. So why don't you tell us what it's like helping run an enormous school district in the greatest public health challenge of our age? We'd like to know, you know, what's going right, what needs some more attention and what you're really going to be looking out for over the next 90 or 120 days.
Yeah, well, first thanks, it looks like our good friend Morgan McGarvey, Senator McGarvey.
Our special guest, Senator Morgan McGarvey.
Thank you for being here. And I trust that Morgan will jump in and make himself heard if he wants to ask a question or, or bring up anything. To address your question, I mean, it's, it's really like a military operation essentially. The, the scale of the changes and systems, both, both, you know, in terms of network infrastructure and in terms of teaching and learning systems that we've had to put in place have been just enormous. I can't say enough about the work that Dr. Polio and his team have done. You know, all of us recognize that even if we had done the best job possible, which I think we have more or less, a few hiccups along the way, that, you know, it's not going to be ideal. This is not the ideal way to, to do this. This is really something that if you were going to choose to do it, which I don't really think we would, but if you were going to choose to do teaching and learning this way, you would take years and years to, to plan out and get it right. And obviously, we didn't, we didn't have that luxury. So, you know, it seems like every day, there's a different challenge that comes up. You know, you may have read about how we had some, you know, kind of teenage hijinks going on last week with our Google Meet Live, Live Meeting Platform and caused us to switch over to a, a format with a little bit more security features to try to prevent some of that. But, you know, in turn, that's created its own kind of set of difficulties. So, you know, I mean, I, just to give an example of one of the things, like today, we were scrambling to figure out how we were going to be able to feed kids because the, the federal government, I think it was a waiver that they extended to us to allow us to feed kids beyond the normal meal, meals that we provide. They were not going to renew that and it was going to expire. So we were scrambling to figure out how to, how to feed kids. And thankfully, at, I think literally the last moment, the USDA reversed its previous position and extended that through the end of the year. But, you know, it's, it's always something like that. Every day, there's, there's something like that that happens. And it's just something that we have to continue to be adaptable to. And yeah, just to always be ready to, to, to do the next thing that needs to be done.
So, you know, you really raised up a great, raised a great point. You know, we're running these schools, but not in a vacuum. You're certainly impacted by decisions that are made in Frankfurt and in Washington. Shed a little light on your view of, of the shared stakeholders here. They can't all be as great quality as Morgan McGarvey, who is a fantastic champion for the public schools. And as a result, I know is supporting you, Doc, like I am. But I know that, I know that education is, is a primary responsibility of government in general and, and your charge specifically. To what degree has Frankfurt and Washington been helpful or unhelpful? And as, as people who are not just going to go to the ballot and vote for you this fall, what should we be looking at? How, how should your regular concerned citizen who cares an awful lot about the basic operation of government, like our schools, you know, what scorecard should we be using? Who's making your life easier, who's making it more difficult?
Well, you know, you guys know this about me, but the, the folks who may be, you know, getting this link and watching it are going to find out right now that I'm, I really don't hold back. You know, I, I, I call it like I see it, not that that's how everybody else sees it. But, you know, the, the response at the national level has been nothing short of catastrophic, you know, in any way you want to, you want to look at it. You know, of course, there has been some emergency funding for school systems put in place. But if you look at the overall size of the relief packages in something like the CARES Act, for instance, you know, these things were absolutely crammed full of giveaways to corporate America and stuff for normal, everyday people and school systems was in there, but, you know, nowhere near the scale of those other things. And, you know, the cynical side of me sees it as, well, they just thought they had to throw in, you know, throw in some, some breadcrumbs so it didn't look like a complete corporate giveaway. So of course, that funding is, has been a help, it's, it's been sorely needed. It's, it's a one-time infusion, you know, it's nothing that's going to sustain us over the long haul. So, so, you know, from the funding to the mitigation of the spread of COVID at the national level, I mean, that's been nothing short of a disaster. You know, our Senate Majority Leader, who, you know, lives just a few blocks from, from Morgan and I, you know, as usual, has just been an obstructionist and, you know, has not really been interested in doing more than the bare minimum necessary to, to try to help, help people. So, you know, we, we've basically been on our own when it comes to the, the national government. You know, with the, with a few exceptions like that meal plan, because I guess they, they figured they should not let children literally starve in the streets. So they, they did something like that. You know, and on the state level, I was really, really impressed with Governor Beshear's response until July 2nd, you know, until whenever, you know, those, those kind of crazy Trump protests happened. And since then, honestly, it hasn't been what it needs to be, I don't think. You know, there's, of course, pressure coming from everywhere on Governor Beshear and, and the rest of us to, you know, allow things to function as normally as possible. But, you know, I was just talking to my colleague, James Craig, on the board the other day. And we were talking about how, you know, it absolutely drives us up a wall that you can go to Target, you know, pretty much as normal, like you would in your normal daily life, and kids aren't in school, you know, like, or you can go, I mean, Target may not be the best example because they do have actual staples that, you know, people need to buy. But, you know, there are all sorts of things that are open that don't necessarily need to be open. Meanwhile, you know, that's contributing to the, the increase of COVID cases in our community. I haven't checked it today, but last week, you know, the positive test rate in Louisville was over 10%. By any measure that I saw last week, Jefferson County was in the red zone for, for COVID. So, you know, it's really frustrating on a number of different levels. One of them is, you know, we get all kinds of, I've gotten more emails over the last, you know, month on the school board than I probably did on the first, like, two years combined, you know, between sports and starting school. And, you know, I agree with everybody that wants kids to be in school. I mean, I'm a JCPS parent myself, you know, I see the challenges that I would, honestly, right before I got on this call, I was dealing with some home challenges related to NTI, as I'm sure Senator McGarvey has been doing as well in his household with the, the crew that he's got running around. So it's really challenging for families and parents in a number of different ways. I want kids to be in school, I want kids to be playing sports, but we're not making, as you said, these decisions in a vacuum. You know, if we, if we conduct any in-person activities, as, you know, I certainly interpreted Dr. Stack as saying last week in front of KHSA, the Athletics Association, that we are going to increase the rate of, of COVID cases if we have in-person activities. So, you know, it's not just a decision that parents are making about themselves and their kids. You know, they, going to school may get people sick in our community who are immunocompromised, who are much older, who maybe never set foot into school, but through the, you know, chain of disease transmission end up getting COVID and, you know, and die or have, you know, lifelong hospital bills because of it. So it's been incredibly frustrating, we're just kind of trying to put one foot in front of the other and do the best we can. You know, it's, you know, I'm sure you guys know from your experience in public life that very often, there are no right answers, you know, there are just least bad answers. And I think we're definitely in that, in that phase right now.
Senator McGarvey, I know you, you're a strong supporter of Dr. Cole, like I am. What are you, what are you seeing in Frankfurt? What, what do you, what are your views on what Frankfurt can do to make, to make it easier on the folks who are running our public schools?
Well, you know, I think all of us know this, right? That COVID has exposed and exacerbated the cracks that were already there. And so, of course, the first thing we can do in Frankfurt is actually make a real commitment to funding public education in Kentucky. The next thing we can do is to recognize how people are learning. And if, even if you're learning remotely, as people are doing now with NTI, or you just want to get on the worldwide web to complete your homework assignment once kids are back in classes, we don't have internet available to many of the students in JCPS. So these are, these are problems, you know, broadband access, Adam, you've talked about that in, in your efforts in public life and, and funding education, getting real childcare, I say childcare, but pre-K, affordable childcare, universal pre-K. We're talking about universal pre-K, we still don't have universal full-day kindergarten in Kentucky. So a lot of the problems.
I realize that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so a lot of the problems, honestly, that we're seeing now, we knew about beforehand. And many of us have been championing these causes. What I'm hopeful now is that people are listening. And that is, this is brought into everyone's home in a reality, as we're all dealing with, with seeing what's going on in schools and, and worrying about the achievement gap, worrying about how we can help kids that will have a renewed dedication to public education. Because Adam, as you know, and Chris, as you know, Kentucky actually was a leader in public education 20, 30 years ago. And, you know, we, yeah, so, you know, too often, we're, we're the butt of jokes now, but we were once looked to as a leader and we need to get back to that spot.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, you guys probably know this, but a lot of folks don't, don't. Since 2008, since the recession in 2008, only two states have cut their state education funding deeper than Kentucky has. Oklahoma and I think Texas, I can't remember exactly, but, but Kentucky, we have, our, our state funding for education has dropped 16% since 2008 alone. That is an enormous amount of money. And that's had really serious consequences on what we're able to provide for kids. You know, the, the competition for teachers is getting really, really intense. There's a nationwide teacher shortage. So, you know, districts that can't afford to pay their teachers what they deserve are going to really be behind the eight ball. Thankfully, we've gotten out ahead about, out ahead of that a little bit in JCPS, but we need to be doing a better job. So as Senator McGarvey said, excuse me, it's really exposed, I think, as you put it, the, the cracks in the system. And if we don't, you know, we're at the point now where if we don't start filling these cracks immediately, you know, they're going to be chasms that our institutions are going to fall through. I mean, we've got in Jefferson County Public Schools, over 30 buildings, school buildings that are at end of life, which means that they could need to be shut down really at any moment and become unsafe for kids to be in. Now, obviously, there's no kids there now, but when we get back to in-person instruction, that's going to be a huge deal. You know, we're going to have to start closing schools, consolidating schools, which is not going to be, you know, good for the community if, if we don't address the serious funding challenges that we have.
Yeah, Chris, you just brought up something interesting considering, you know, the, the three of us talking right now. I think I'm right when I say this, but Ballard High School was the last high school, the most recent high school built in Jefferson County, and it was built before all three of us were born.
That's absolutely right.
Yeah, yeah, 55, 53, 54 years ago, something like that. Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's our, that's our newest.
That's our newest school was, was built. I, we can't remember it being built and that's unacceptable, but also.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's why, you know, what you're, the work you're doing, Chris, is so important and why, and whenever people ask me, even whether it's legislature, we're talking about the US Senate or Congress or President, when you're voting in Jefferson County, I, I think the two most important offices you can vote for are mayor and your school board. And having good people on the school board who care about all kids, all kids, and care about the, the betterment of public education of all of our kids is so important. So, and the work you do is so important.
Well, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
So Chris, you, you have, when you've been a candidate in the past, you've enjoyed the strong support of teachers. And I know you've remained close to teachers throughout your term. And I, and I know people know that they can talk to you in plain terms. So, so what are teachers telling you, man?
I mean, everything that you would imagine and that we've talked about already. I mean, that, you know, it's just very, very challenging for teachers right now. I mean, teaching is a ridiculously challenging job in the best of times. Right now, it is nothing short of miraculous that our teachers are doing the work that they're doing. You know, of course, these days, all of us have to have some technological proficiency. But, you know, we're asking our teachers essentially to get up to speed on, you know, several different online tools very, very quickly. And, you know, on top of, you know, the pedagogy that they've, that they're in charge of. So, excuse me, so, you know, teachers, they, they, now, my impression, obviously, there's 6,000 teachers. This isn't going to be a blanket statement that covers everybody. But they were very nervous about going back to the, the classroom in person, and for good reason, I think. You know, it's just, it's, uh, they don't, they don't want to get sick, they don't want to risk their lives, they don't want to risk their family's lives to, to do their jobs. I mean, they desperately want to do their jobs, they desperately want to help their kids, you know, they love their kids, they miss their kids deeply, but, you know, it's not right to ask them to risk their lives or, you know, to have to choose between leaving their profession and risking their lives to continue to do their job. So that's the biggest concern that they've had and for good reason. And, yeah, I just, I feel for our teachers a lot and we try to support them the best we can. But, you know, it's, it's just hard right now.
So Morgan, I know you're close to teachers as well, and while Chris gets a drink of water because of my.
Thank you, yeah, I'll be right, I'll be right back.
I was hoping that, Morgan, I was hoping you would wax poetic about your experience with teachers here recently.
No, well, you know, I, I just say this, a, a strong public school system is the key to Kentucky's future. And a strong public school system obviously has so much to do with the teachers. We have great teachers here, I've got my kids in public school, I'm a product of the public schools here. And, you know, everyone has that teacher in their life that means so much to them because they are putting in extra. And I, I agree with Chris, the teachers miss the classroom, the teachers I've talked to, my kid's teacher this year, you know, they miss the classroom, they want to see those kids. And they are working overtime to try and find ways to reach the kids in the same way that our teachers reached us while not being physically in the classroom. And so I see a tremendous effort, I see more work, and we get emails at all hours from our kid's teacher right now. Are you ready for this, have you done this? You know, we didn't, we didn't download or upload, I guess, the, an assignment the right way. Once last week, we got a message from the teacher because, you know, she had a feeling the kids had done it, but just making sure, checking in. And so I think teachers are working really hard, I think everybody wants to be back in school. But I also think that we have a shared goal of being back in school safely.
Yeah, I think, you know, the one thing that keeps me up at night through all of this is that, you know, the kids who are developmental age, those K through 3 kids who really need the classroom. I, I think it's going to require us as a, as a society to rethink the educational model post-COVID. I mean, to me, they're, you know, they're going to be kids who need to repeat a grade. And any pre-existing stigma that exists that was out there needs to go by the wayside. These are extraordinary times. And Chris, let me just say this, I'm really glad that somebody with a heart as big as yours and a brain as big as yours is helping make policy in the largest school district in Kentucky. Because I, I don't think we have, we have really a good grasp of what the societal implications are going to be of kids being out of the classroom for, for nine months.
That's absolutely right. I mean, you know, back when Kentucky was headed in a good direction with rates of COVID over the summer, you know, I sent Dr. Polio an email and, and, you know, and he agreed that, you know, I, I really feared the educational consequences if we did not get kids back in school, you know, near the normal beginning time. Now, obviously, things changed in July and August and we weren't able to do that. But that doesn't mean that fear has gone away. I mean, I, I really am afraid for our youngest learners, what they're, what they're missing out on right now. You know, and as you point out, it may require that when they come back, you know, that they go year-round with some breaks, you know, in between to get them caught up, you know. Kids that come into JCPS already, when they come in at kindergarten, many of them are already at a significant disadvantage based on the early years of their life. You know, they're, they're just not quite where they need to be developmentally for, you know, myriad reasons that, that relate to all the issues we're talking about. You know, they've fallen through the, the cracks of society. And, you know, that problem's going to be exacerbated. I mean, we were thankfully, Dr. Polio and his team, ever since he came on board, you know, he's recognized that this is a problem and they've been working really hard to put systems in place to get everybody caught up, you know, as quickly as possible, including the, the Backpack League summer learning that we had last year. That was a huge success. We were really looking forward to expanding upon that this past summer and just, you know, bringing in so many more kids. And we weren't able to do that, of course. So, you know, I just, it's just really hard, you know, politics is a part of our life, I like politics, you know, it's, it's interesting. It's good to debate and disagree and, you know, do those sorts of things. But when we get into the hyper partisan sort of politics that, you know, have really serious negative effects on kids in this case, you know, that's just really hard to stomach. It, it's really, really infuriating, honestly, you know, to watch people at the, the federal level especially not do what needs to be done to take care of people in our, in our community, especially the, the children. So, you know, we're, we're all going to need to, you know, I mean, at the risk of being a little bit, you know, touchy, touchy-feely right now, you know, we're, after this, you know, starting now and into the indefinite future, everybody in the, in the US is going to need to support each other, but especially the kids that have missed out on, on so much because of, you know, through, through no fault of their own.
So, you know, Chris, I want to follow that thread because we, we, all of us, all three of us and the people who watch this are.
Morgan's got to head out.
Yeah, good to see you guys, no, absolutely, we'll talk to you guys soon.
Yeah, you know, so I want to follow that, man. So, you know, we, we, we just survived in Kentucky what was supposed to be the most anti-public education governing majority, you know, in the history of the state, and certainly, we're glad to see our former governor gone. But are you still fighting a rear guard action and, and from, from people who fundamentally don't believe in public education?
Yeah, yes and no. So, you know, and this, again, this is just kind of my sense of where things are. You know, the, the main attacks that we saw during the Bevin administration, I think, you know, as optimistic as I ever am, which is, you know, I'm not a natural optimist, is.
Wow, we're such good friends, Chris.
Yeah, right. I think you're going to see some of that let up a little bit in, in the state legislature. So, you know, charter schools, for instance, I mean, you know, it certainly seems to me that that's an issue nobody really has any interest in, in getting back to. And while charter schools are technically, you know, still legal in Kentucky, I don't see them being funded anytime soon. Of course, I would prefer that the law be repealed, but, you know, for now, I'll settle for not funding them. You know, scholarship tax credits supposedly, the, the school vouchers, private school vouchers. That's probably the biggest threat that is still looming out there. Again, you know, given everything that's going on, I'd be surprised if anybody wanted to, to take that on in the legislature anytime soon, but you never know, it could happen. I think the biggest challenge, you know, is just a general, unfortunately, a, a general anti-public agency, anti-government mentality that has taken root in our society, you know, over the last 20, 30, 40 years that, you know, makes people say things like, oh, I care about education, but then, okay, well, what are you going to do to fund education at, at the level it needs to be funded? Well, I don't really know, you know, budget's a challenge, you know, we don't have the money, it's unfortunate. That's a, again, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that really irritate me. And that's, that's near the top of the list, you know, when people want to tell you how much they care about something and then aren't willing to take any risks or show any leadership, frankly, to do what needs to be done to, to support things like public education. So I, you know, I think we have just a really kind of, with, with notable exceptions like Senator McGarvey and, and others, there's just really a dearth of, of leadership in Frankfurt that, you know, is willing to, to fight the fights that you, honestly, you may not win, but that need to be fought so that we can try to get kids and teachers and families the resources they need.
You know, man, you've always been willing to stand up and do the right thing and say things that are unpopular. And it's, it's clear to me, you have a strong moral compass. You've been one of the leaders in making the case that we need additional revenue for our schools. And, you know, certainly, there's going to be pushback, particularly when folks feel like we're in a recession. I, I've heard you both privately and in public make a pretty compelling case that we've got to invest in the future and we've got to start doing it right now. So why don't you expand on that, man? Talk about not just what we need to do, but why this is so important to you.
Well, you know, there's no way, we can all talk about equity, equality, however you, you want to put it. You know, we can all talk in principle about it, but until you're willing to step up and, you know, level the playing field for real, you know, with actual resources to, to, to bring kids, you know, to the same level. You know, I don't, I don't want to hear you talk about equity inequality, you know, go write some poem about it or something, you know, like. But, but let's, if, if we do, really do care about equity, which everybody says they do, most people say that they do at this point, then we've, we've got to take action to make, excuse me, I don't know what's wrong with my throat tonight.
Allergies are terrible, man.
I guess it is, yeah. Make the systemic changes necessary to make equity a reality. And that's just not going to happen without investing more resources in especially our, our neediest students. You know, the, the, the truth is that students that come from middle-class, upper-middle-class families, white families especially, they're probably going to do fine in school, really, no matter what, you know, because they're going to have the resources at home and support at home, their parents aren't necessarily working three jobs, you know, so they're going to have the time to make sure that they, they get the help they need to succeed. And some of our kids, that's just, you know, that, that's not going to happen. So, you know, in, in, on top of the 16% reduction in state funding that we've seen since 2008, the federal government only funds students with disabilities, IDEA, and Title I for kids in poverty. They only fund those at about half of what the law that they passed said they were going to fund it at. So that's another huge funding shortfall. Unfortunately, the Jefferson County Board of Education itself has not always made the best funding decisions in the past. So that's, you know, deprived us of some, some revenue year after year. You know, without going into the weeds too much about this, you know, the main source of local revenue compounds on itself year after year. And if you don't get it in one year, that not only affects that year, but every year into the future because you've got a, a smaller base to, to build off of. So, you know, we're, we're just, you know, the research is really clear that school systems that spend more money per student get better results for their students. There's, you know, that research is irrefutable, it, it couldn't be more clear. So, so, you know, that's, as a board member, that's one of the main things that I'm charged with. I mean, my job is to set high standards for Dr. Polio, hold him accountable. I mean, my job is to set high standards for Dr. Polio, hold him accountable for meeting those standards, but then my job is to provide him and his team the resources that they need to be able to, to meet those high standards that the community is rightfully demanding. And without, without additional resources for, for, for JCPS, Dr. Polio, no matter how good he is at his job, just isn't going to be able to get the results that we need.
You know, Chris, you're well familiar with the work that I did as state auditor Jefferson County Public Schools.
Referenced that audit very often.
Well, I hope, I think it was one of the reasons you ran. And so, what we found and what was the largest audit ever performed in the history of Kentucky was that you had a bureaucracy that had just grown and grown and grown, and had gotten away from its core mission and began to, to siphon off resources that needed to get to the classroom. And I just want to say as an editorial comment, you know, I think thanks to leaders like you and, and, and the team that you've got on the board, bringing Dr. Polio in, I think people really need to understand that the level of sophistication and professionalism that you have in the Jefferson County Public Schools is markedly better than it was even a decade ago. Both as a steward of taxpayer dollars, but also a steward of the, of the future hopes of, of the next generation, I have been really pleased with the level of progress that I have seen in the Jefferson County Public Schools. And, and I, I really want to hear you talk about that overall direction, because it is a, it is slow, and I know often you've got to feel like Sisyphus pushing the rock up the hill, but I really think that we're making progress. And I, and I think this is an opportunity for you to talk about, you know, the overall direction of the Jefferson County Public Schools and, and what's going right and what we can accomplish, you know, with additional investment and higher expectations.
Well, you know, the, the first thing that Dr. Polio did when he took over is sought to remedy the fact that JCPS had no district-wide instructional vision. You know, so there were a lot of schools doing really good work, you know, but we did not have as a district, you know, a, a plan really for all of our schools to improve. So that was the first thing that he did was implement a district-wide instructional vision related to what he calls the backpack of success skills. And, you know, I think, I, I'm fully supportive of what that's based on, which is a recognition that, you know, in today's world, of course, everybody needs to be able to have, you know, good reading, writing, speaking, you know, skills and be good at math and those sorts of things. But you also need those success skills, as Dr. Polio calls them, you know, the ability to work with a wide variety of different people, you know, the ability to be an excellent communicator, the ability to be a globally competent, you know, engaged citizen. So those are the sorts of things that Marty has, has really focused on, you know, in tandem with literacy and numeracy and making sure that kids have those skills that they need. So, we have so many talented individuals working in Jefferson County Public Schools. I mean, I'm really blown away continually at the talent that we have, both in, you know, district administration with, with Dr. Polio and his team, and then in all of our schools, just incredibly talented, dedicated people. It's a, it's a real pleasure to, to get to work with. But, you know, a few years ago, you know, under, under past leadership, you know, it, it was a struggle. I mean, you know, it, Dr. Polio inherited a pretty, you know, as the state audit showed. I mean, frankly, you know, the, the, there are aspects of the former state audit under Commissioner Lewis that were, of course, politically motivated and unfair, but, you know, a lot of it was right on target, to be honest with you. And, and I don't think anybody in, in JCPS has ever shied away from the fact that a lot of that was, was on target and that we had a lot to fix. You know, in, in normal times, the work that Dr. Polio and his team have done around that state audit and correcting, I think, 240 something deficiencies that were identified, which have now all been corrected, and we look forward to another audit next month to, to, to demonstrate that, that would be front page news really every day. I mean, I don't think that there's a district in the state, maybe in the nation, that is more in compliance with, with state and federal regulations that is doing what it's supposed to do than JCPS is because of the work that Dr. Polio and his team have done. Now, you know, remember that and then think about, okay, on top of that, we have dealt with COVID, you know, we have dealt with the attacks of the Bevin administration, you know, we have dealt with, a lot of the kids are just now getting to be school age years that were born around the recession of 2008. So we're seeing kids come to our schools with more challenges than ever before. So all of that is hitting JCPS at the same time. And while we have a lot of work to do, and we have not been perfect by any stretch of the imagination, you know, the fact that, that we've accomplished what we have, I think is, again, nothing short of miraculous. And it's unfortunate, I understand why, but it's unfortunate that people probably aren't going to be able to appreciate all of that work, just because, you know, the situation that we're in right now and, and, you know, everything looks like, you know, we're not getting things right, you know, sometimes, and we're not, because of the enormity of the challenges that we're facing.
Welcome to public life, my friend.
Exactly.
So listen, having, you know, knowing you like I have and having been as involved with trying to improve the culture and operation and administration of the Jefferson County Public Schools, I think any fair-minded observer thinks that Marty Polio has been terrifically positive in his influence on the schools, but the way he got there and, and the way the board, particularly with your leadership, decided to elevate this critical leader, I think is a story that needs to be told, Chris. So I, I wish you would, you know, as we're, as we're rounding down the stretch here, you know, that didn't happen on accident. So why don't you tell us how, how you got Marty Polio in as superintendent?
Well, the, you know, and I'll get to Marty in a second, because he certainly deserves a ton of praise, but, you know, the most important thing when I took office in, in January 2017 was essentially, you know, to, to replace the, the former superintendent as quickly as possible. I mean, you know, I, I don't like to, you know, look in the mirror too much, but JCPS was a district in crisis. I mean, there's just no way around it by any objective, and I knew that when I ran, you know, for office, but after I took office, even I was shocked at the state of, of the district and especially district administration. So, you know, it became clear that we, we may have to go outside, you know, the, the kind of traditional hiring route a little bit, not really due to anybody's fault that had worked in central office under former leadership, you know, we just needed a fresh perspective, frankly, somebody from outside. But also, of course, Dr. Polio was from inside, because he worked for, for JCPS, worked for JCPS for 20-plus years and been a principal at some of our, you know, most challenging schools. So, from day one, Dr. Polio's name was, was on our minds as somebody that we'd be interested in talking to. I don't think any of us expected Dr. Polio to really blow us away in his interview as much as he did, first for the acting superintendent job, and then, of course, for the, for the permanent or long-term superintendent, regular contract job. And, and he, he did, he absolutely blew us away, you know, with his, the, you know, on top of all the expertise that Dr. Polio has, one of the most important things that I see in him all the time is he genuinely cares about kids. And you might think that people in that position, of course, they care about kids, but there's all kinds of people that don't, honestly, not so much in JCPS, but in education, that, that really aren't able to keep their concern for kids at the forefront. You know, it, it becomes about something else, you know, it becomes about them or politics or, you know, you know, their career, you know, careerism. So, you know, that assured me when I first started to get to know Dr. Polio that, you know, even if he did have, you know, some weaknesses, which I don't think he has a lot of, that he was going to correct them quickly, because he's smart, he cares about kids, and he knows, you know, he knows people, you know, he, he knows how to get along with all different kinds of people. Now, I don't have to work for him, you know, so I'm sure that people that, that have to work for him might tell you a different story sometimes, but honestly, that's one of the things that I like about him too, is that, you know, if, if, if you need to be read the riot act, you know, or if you need a wake-up call, he's going to give it to you. And honestly, there are a lot of people in JCPS that probably did need a wake-up call. And I, I, I think and I hope that he has been giving it to him over, over the past few years. So, you know, it was an intense process. We knew we had to find the right person for the school district. You know, we looked inside, we looked outside, we, we did a, a months-long community listening session to find out what the community wanted to see in their next superintendent. And, you know, the, the proverbial stars aligned, and it certainly seemed to us that what the community wanted and what was going to be best for the district at this point was Dr. Polio, who, you know, at the time, I don't know how he feels now, but at the time, you know, wanted the job and wanted to take on the challenge that he knew lay in front of him, and, you know, he'll, he'll be the first to tell you, it's been a challenge.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. So, Chris, as you, as you look back on your term, what's the, why don't you share with, you know, I think that's probably, I think Dr. Polio is probably your greatest accomplishment. What is, what, what, what's, you know, what's one that you would love to have back?
Oh, gosh.
To me, not so much, but is, is for the district. Where was, you know, were there any missed opportunities? Are there any fights that you lost that you wish you'd won?
You know, there's probably a lot. You know, I try not to, I try not to Monday morning quarterback myself or anybody else too much. And honestly, we just haven't had the time to do too many kind of post-mortem analyses of things. I think, you know, I think some, it's a, it's just such a balancing act. When you're trying to turn the ship, you know, in a different direction, you know, and the inertia of the ship, you know, is going this way and you're trying to turn it this way, there's going to be some conflicts that occur, you know, within the organization. And, you know, I'm sure there are times that both the board and Dr. Polio have maybe pushed a little bit too hard and, and tried to do things a little bit too quickly. I mean, you know, as much as people say patience is a virtue, I don't really believe that a lot, especially in, in public life. I mean, I think probably it would be good for me to be a little bit more patient sometimes, you know, in my, in my role on the school board. But, you know, I'm sorry, I'm just, you know, we're talking about kids' futures, and we can't afford to be any more patient than is, well, we just can't afford to be patient, period. You know, you've got to get on board with what, you know, we're trying to do. Now, having said that, I think we do have to always make sure that we are collaborating, especially with teachers. And we're doing some really exciting things with, they're, the national expert on district teacher collaboration is a guy named Dr. Saul Rubenstein from Rutgers University. We're, JCPS, the board, Dr. Polio, his team, the Teachers Association, and Dr. Rubenstein are working together to put some things in place in, in our schools to make sure that we are collaborating with teachers. You know, I'm a, I'm an educator myself at Spalding University, you know, at, you know, a, a kind of financially struggling, you know, institution where, you know, a lot of our kids come, our first-generation college kids come from challenging environments. So, you know, I know what it's like when administration doesn't listen to you as a teacher and how frustrating that is. So it's really important that, that we do that. And I think, I think the Teachers Association and teachers in general, and Dr. Polio, my sense is that they have a really, really good productive relationship. Now, of course, there's always going to be some disagreements, there's always going to be, well, I wish we were doing it this way instead of that way, but I, I have every confidence that we can work those things out. You know, at, one of the things that, I mean, I, I don't even want to say this really, I should knock on all sorts of wood, but I, I, I really hope that if I am fortunate enough to be reelected, you know, my second term, I hope, is not one crisis after another like my first term has been, because it, it really has, a lot of what we've been doing has been crisis management for the last three and a half, four years. We've managed to do an incredible amount of positive stuff, you know, in addition to managing the crises, but there are so many things that we could be doing right now, so many strides we could be making if, you know, we weren't dealing with COVID or attacks from the Bevin administration, you know, or the, the funding challenges that we do. So I just, you know, I'm really excited about the prospect of a second term, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to be reelected, because I, I really do think, as you indicated, we've made some good progress, but there's a lot more that needs to be done. And I really think that the, that our schools are poised to make great strides in the, in the next four, five, six years, you know, if we can, if we can keep on the, the initiatives that we're, we're pursuing.
Yeah, Chris, someone far more clever than me said that I'm ready to live in precedented times.
Right, that's right.
All there. So listen, man, I think, you know, obviously, anytime people get to listen to you and get to hear your vision and your obvious passion for kids and community improvement, I think it's great. But I also want to, I want to make sure people see the human side of you. So let's go to, let's go to rapid response on some stuff, okay?
Let's do it.
Favorite food?
Man, you just can't go wrong with pizza. I mean, you know, any kind, you know, the, obviously, good pizza's better than bad pizza, but as, again, a wise man once said, even bad pizza's still pizza. So, you know, love pizza, love seafood as well, any form of seafood, I just love. Can't get the freshest seafood in Lowell, of course, but, but I love.
Favorite music?
You know, I, I'm a child of the eighties, so I grew up in kind of the, the hip-hop generation, so I'm, I'm a big hip-hop fan. You know, I, I don't get as, as much time as a father of two, you know, and, and all the other stuff, I have to keep up, you know, with, with what's really current in hip-hop, but, but that's my favorite genre of music. If I had to pick one to listen to for the rest of my life, that's what it would be.
Do you rap most in the car by yourself or in the shower?
In the car, definitely in the car by myself. Crank it up, you know, get it going, for sure. And, you know, I can't really carry, carry a tune, so, you know, rap appeals to me for that reason as well.
The, what's the best concert you've ever been to?
Oh, man, but, you know, probably, now, this is going to go outside the hip-hop domain. I, I'm going to give two answers, I guess. So the, the best concert is probably R.E.M. in, in the, let's see, 1995, I think. It, I'm, too bad Senator McGarvey is not here, because he, he loves R.E.M. even more than I do. But yeah, probably R.E.M. in 1995, I think it was. The most, now, I will say the most energetic concert, when I was a kid, somehow my family got free tickets to MC, an MC Hammer concert when I was like 15, 16 years old. I mean, that was just like, I, you know, I don't know what the guy is on, but I want some of it, because it's just like constant energy for three-plus hours, so that, that was quite an experience.
That's good stuff, man. Favorite movie?
Oh, this is a tough one. I love film, you know, I, okay, again, I'm going to cheat and give multiple answers, but the favorite classic movie is Casablanca, Humphrey Bogart, Inger Berman. You know, my favorite modern movies are things like, I love Twelve Monkeys, Bruce Willis movie, I love anything by Quentin Tarantino. You know, I thought his latest film was, well, no, I actually haven't seen Once in a Time Upon a Time in Hollywood, but the one before that wasn't great, but Django Unchained and The Glorious Bastards, and of course, Pulp Fiction, you know, are just, you know, I, I think, you know, people are going to be studying Quentin Tarantino films for decades to come. The guy is just an absolute genius. Now, most recently, my favorite films are from a guy, well, you probably know him from, from the series Veep on HBO with Julia Louis-Dreyfus, Armando Iannucci, who did the show in Britain in the thick of it that Veep is based on, but he's done two political movies, In the Loop, about the Iraq War, was awesome, The Death of Stalin, which just came out a few years ago, that's on Netflix.
Yeah.
You know, watch that, just, you know, both hilarious and horrifying movies at the same time. So that guy, again, is just a genius.
You know, brother, I think when this is all over, I think you would have a hell of a career as a film critic.
All right, man, that's really what I probably want to do with my life. I mean, I, you know, I love movies, I like to read too, of course, you know, but, but, you know, we're in a, we're in the film visual age, you know, and I guess even now, it's kind of progressed from film to, you know, serial television shows that you binge-watch. So I'm, I'm a huge, you know, Breaking Bad and, and Better Call Saul fan, you know, big Vince Gilligan fan, love those shows. I love anything, you know, I love mystery novels, you know, Babylon Berlin was a great.
I know you're a reader, just like me, you're a reader. Give me your favorite fiction, give me a couple of your favorite fictions, fiction books and your favorite nonfiction.
So fiction, I gotta stick with, I think, Catch 22, classic by Joseph Heller. You know, I think this just captures the. know, I think this just captures the modern world, you know, in ways nobody else has ever been able to. And again, it's both hilarious and horrifying at the same time. Oh, I'm going to throw in another film, Doctor Strangelove, you know, one of my all-time favorite films. You know, my favorite contemporary living author is a guy named Russell Banks, especially, you know, I, frankly, you know, he hasn't written anything great in the last 10 years or so, but, but for the 20 years before that, what would just turn out, one fantastic novel after another. His, his, my favorite novel of his is a, a novel called Cloud Splitter, which is a fictional account of the life of John Brown, the radical abolitionist. So that's a, that's a fantastic novel. Nonfiction, you know, I, this is where I get really kind of dorky because I'm an anthropologist, you know, so I read tons of nonfiction all the time. You know, anything having to do with, with race in the United States, you know, so there's American Apartheid, you know, is a fantastic book that everybody should read. You know, one of the, there's a book out there called The Color of Money about redlining in the United States. It's a great book, but I feel like American Apartheid is the same book that was written 20, 25 years ago that unfortunately people don't know about. So that's a, a, a recommendation for everybody watching. Go out and get American Apartheid and, and read that.
Well, that's great. Well, Chris, thank you so much for the opportunity to spend an hour.
Thank you. This has been, yeah, enjoyable.
It's been fun to be on this side of the interview table rather than the other.
You should think about a career doing this too. I mean, there'd be a, you know, you'd be a great political talk show host, you know, political slash pop culture talk show host. That'd be, I'd watch, I'd watch the heck out of that.
Well, listen, I'm here to support my friends, Chris, and you certainly are one. I'm proud of you. I'm proud of the job you've done.
Oh, wait, let's, my campaign manager will kill me. Have we even mentioned donating to the campaign?
Yeah, we started, so we need to end with it. Folks, as we began, good candidates need to be resourced to win. And when you have a candidate who runs with an agenda like Chris does, the bigger his margin of victory, the stronger mandate he has to drive the kind of reform and modernization that has been the hallmark of his first term. So, Chris, why don't you tell people where they can give?
Well, yeah, so callforschoolboard.com. Of course, there's all kinds of links there to donate. When we send out a link, you know, to this interview, we'll of course include a donate button with that. Of course, we can accept, you know, all kinds of online contributions. We'll tell you where to send a check if you want to. And not just, you know, wanting to win this race convincingly, but, you know, who the heck knows what's going to happen in this election in November 2020? I mean, you know, it's, it's not a typical election. I mean, I would feel very, very confident, you know, if this was a typical election where I could be out there pounding the pavement, knocking on doors. I mean, in 2016, I knocked on 5,000 doors personally, the campaign knocked on 13,000 doors, you know, and, you know, we're just not going to be able to, to connect with voters that way quite as easily this time around. Though, we're of course going to try to do that as much as we can. So we don't want to take any, any chances with this election. We need to cover all of our bases. You know, Dr. Polio needs board members on the board that are supporting him, that are experienced working with him. And, you know, I certainly fit that, fit that description. So we need you to donate and we need you to think about donating 250, 500, or, or even more to the campaign. Again, that's callforschoolboard.com backslash donate. But just go to the homepage, callforschoolboard.com and you'll see all kinds of links to the, to the donate page.
All right, my friend, appreciate it. Enjoyed so much the opportunity, looking for supporting you and, and looking forward to returning you to office with a big, big majority. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Adam. Talk to you soon.
Friend, thanks.